Okay, if board members could take their seats, we will get started with the next item on tonight's work session agenda. All right. So, the next item is the CIP presentation, review of major development activities. And so with that, I will let, I think this is an informational presentation for the most part, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Plattenberg.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, members of the school board. I'm really excited to have the opportunity this evening to be presenting with two of the major players over in the general county. Out of the zoning department, we have Tracy Strunk, who's the Director of Zoning and Evaluation, over in DPZ, and Mary Ann Gardner, who's the Director of the Planning Division. They have volunteered their time to come over at this hour to go ahead and provide you with an informational briefing that we've started a couple of years ago. And I want to thank Jessica Gillis, our Director of Planning, who's here joining us up here, and of course Marty Smith, for really getting us to come back again and speak to the developments, some of the things that are going on across the county. As you know, this kicks off the bewitching season of the CIP, and it is the beginning of what we'll then come about in all of our future discussions that we have, some that are already scheduled, and some of them will be scheduled on into the next year. But the grand opportunity here is they get to talk about some exciting stuff that's going on across Fairfax County, and indeed, that I think is a lot of innovative things that we've been working on, on some of the comprehensive plan amendments and so forth. But really, it's just a high-level brief as to, as I said, what's going on in the county. If you have any urging questions, which I'm sure you will, because it's just informational, because the hour will be happy to either address those, or really, we could follow up in writing with the next step process that is pretty much the standard protocol. But however you choose to proceed, but with that, I'd like to turn it over to you all. And again, thank you for taking the time to be here with us this evening. We always look forward to hearing this because we've now incorporated and developed it into our CIP document because it's been so informational, and our communities have really enjoyed seeing what's going on and not just hearing about it here and there.
Oh, thank you. Before we start, I similarly wanted to say thank you to the Fairfax County School Board, and particularly to Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Palchuk, who have been coming to our school board, Planning Commission, Schools Committee meetings for the past year or so. This came about as the result of a retreat with our Board of Supervisors and the Fairfax County School Board. And there's been discussion going on about, does the comprehensive plan policy need to change to address various things like economic development, the effect of development on schools? And with that, I'd also like to thank Jessica and Jeff Plattenberg and Kevin Sneed, who have been at all those meetings with us, and very much appreciate that. So Tracy is going to start us off with a talk, a little overview of what's been going on in the development world. And then I'll follow up with the comprehensive plan, which as you know, is a longer-range view, and talk about some of the trends that we see coming forward. Thank you.
Get a mic. Great. So, again, I'm Tracy Strunk. I'm the Director of the Zoning Evaluation Division. And our office handles the rezonings and also other special exceptions and things. But for your all's interest, it's really the rezonings that bring new residential development into the county. So we're doing this a little bit backwards in the sense that really normally the planning comes first. But I also wanted to, I don't have so many numbers in terms of we have this many housing units coming here and these many students coming out of those numbers. I think you guys get those numbers and can get those numbers probably sliced and diced even better the way you want them from your staff, who are, who give those numbers to us frankly when we're doing the zoning. So I'm trying to focus on some of the, really the forces that we're seeing in the zoning cases and kind of where we're seeing things and that sort of stuff. So happy, if you want more sort of data numbers than that, we're happy to, as Jeff said, help you with that later. So, oops. That is my first slide. I put a picture on it and forgot. You know, so the top bullet is not anything you haven't heard, which is really, development is market-driven. So we do the rezonings and it comes through, and it can, they can be breaking ground, you know, two days after they get through the zoning, or even before, if they get concurrent processing, or they can get approved and sit on the shelf for any number of years. So, you know, we hear that, we hear that a lot from people, okay, well, this is approved, when is it going to be built? We don't really know that. We're still seeing, you know, our plans and our targets are to push development to the activity centers and really sort of preserve the rest of the county and sort of the state that it's in. You will see infill, obviously, in that kind of development in the rest of the county. But we are, most of our development, and you'll see this in a little more of what I talk about, is happening in the urban mixed-use centers, and that is definitely what we're seeing. High-density areas, pedestrian, bicycle, that does come into play, obviously, for you all when we're talking about how are we getting the kids from the new developments that are coming into the schools. New public facilities, this is something we've talked about before. Tysons and some of the Reston Corridor and even the Route 28 area are places that we haven't necessarily, back in the 70s and 80s, didn't really think that residential was going to go there. So when we, when we start deciding that mixed-use and high-density residential needs to be in some of these places, we're definitely starting at a deficit from public facilities. And that is not only schools, but does include schools in terms of, it's schools, it's fire stations, it's community centers, it's parks. And partly because of that, we actually are seeing in a lot of those areas the overlap of athletic fields in particular, something that we're looking for both for the schools and also for the parks as well. So we're seeing some of those. The townhouses and transit areas and the proffer legislation are on kind of separate slides. That was a picture, by the way, of how we're fitting a Tyson's Fire Station and Ball Field together. So one of the things that we're seeing that we hadn't really expected to see was much more of a market for townhouses in our transit station areas. So we had sort of intended these areas and done a lot of the planning work on them being high-intensity residential, high multifamily, high-rise multifamily. And we certainly have seen a fair amount of that, especially in Tysons, as we go out further along the Silver Line Corridor and Reston. We are seeing that, but we are also seeing much more of a push for townhouse development. So we might see the same square footage. A lot of our plans for those multi-use, those mixed-use areas were done on a square footage basis. So we'll, we'll see the same amount of square footage, but it will be, the residential will be in townhouses instead of multifamily units. So obviously, that has some design and land use implications for us in terms of that being a more land consumptive sort of thing, which probably doesn't matter as much to you all, except that that also does then impact the open space, and then we start putting more pressure on our schools and other things to provide the open space. What it is, is larger units and potentially fewer units, but maybe a unit type that might generate a different, a different number of students as well. So that's certainly something we've been seeing in the transit areas that's something to be aware of. The proffer legislation, I touched on it a little last year. Now we're a little farther into it, and we know a little bit more. So just as a quick recap, we had some legislation that went into effect in the middle of 2016, July 1st, 2016, that significantly limits the proffers that can be negotiated by the county for a particular residential. Now, our, all of our sort of mixed-use centers are in, are defined by the legislation as exempt. Actually, that map that's up there is all of our exempt areas. So anything in Tysons, the Reston Corridor, the Route 1 Corridor, our CRDs, those are all in exempt areas. So it's not that much of an impact in terms of sheer numbers of units, I would say. So we've had, we have actually only had two cases that have gone all the way through. Anything that was filed before 2016 was exempt by filing date. So we've had two cases now that have been approved, and that's 20 units. So that's, it's not that much. We have three residential cases that are in now that may or may not go forward, that, you know, maybe have another 100, 150 units in them. So it's not a huge number of units, but it is something to be aware of because of course changes keep coming to the legislation, and we don't know what it's necessarily going to apply to as they change it in the future. And the thing that you all should be most aware of in that is the legislation limits cash contributions to certain things. You can get cash contributions for schools, for public facilities, but it does, the legislation does require that the cash contribution has to address a need that is created by the development itself, can be a part of a need. So obviously, residential developments create children, which is, creates an impact on the school. So that part we're okay on. The other part is that, right now at least, it says it's a need in excess of existing capacity at the time of the rezoning. So if you have a school that has, say, just been expanded and has excess capacity, it would not meet that test. We don't really know where this is going to go in the future. We don't know what's going to happen if there's excess capacity today and you change the district boundary, or the developer waits 30 years to develop, and something has happened, and, you know, so it could be that when it gets rezoned, there's a need, and so they give a cash contribution and we're fine, and then we don't know what happens in five years if there's no need, or the other way around. So that's, there hasn't been any, there are a couple of court cases. I don't think any of them focus on this in particular. It's something that the, all of the local governments have been really pushing on, and the Home Builders Association pushed back frankly, because they say, well, you know, because, you know, we look at it, as I'm sure you do, and say, well, yes, there's, you know, there's excess capacity in this elementary school today, but we happen to know that we just rezoned the property across the street and the property down the road. And once those are all built, there's not going to be excess capacity. And the pushback from the Home Builders Association has been, well, it's not fair to this guy because you don't know if those people are ever going to build those houses or not. And maybe there still will be excess capacity. So that's something to keep an eye on. We don't know how it's going to fall out in the courts. We don't know how the legislation's going to change, but that's, that's been a big point of discussion on the proffer legislation. That. So our areas of focus and where we're really definitely seeing most of the development that's coming in is really in that Silver Line Corridor, Tysons, Reston, and the Innovation Station is getting a lot. Embark and the Richmond Highway Plan is really starting to kick up more. We've seen some interesting things down in that corridor with existing residential developments that are getting infilled with new multifamily. So there's some interesting stuff happening. We expect more down there. I looked back at fiscal 2018, since that's done, and I have numbers for that. And we had about 24 cases that were either amendments of mixed-use cases or new residential that folk, that had residential, big residential components on that. About half of those were in the Silver Line Corridor. And again, that's mostly multifamily, but seeing more of some of the townhouses and that. Overall, only three of those 24 cases were single-family detached. So we're definitely seeing attached. We're not seeing very much of the single-family detached. So that was, I think I checked, yes, so that was 66 new single-family detached units in fiscal 2018. So we've had a few more this year, but that's definitely not, not the bread and butter of what we're seeing anymore on that. One of the things we're proud of, and we've worked really closely with your staff on, is the Innovation Station in Land Bay A. This is an area, I think we talked a little bit about it last year, where the residential growth has been more through the roof than we thought it was going to be. We needed more schools than were even planned out there. And so the planning staff and your staff and the supervisor's office sort of all got together and came up with an idea to get another school site. And so this, just to orient you a little bit, that's obviously Dulles Airport, the Innovation Station, Metro Station up there at the top. The property outlined in red is one we refer to as Pomeroy West, and that just went through Planning Commission last week. And the yellow star there is going to be a new elementary school site, which will be dedicated to the county. The three other cases around it, outlined in orange, are either going through now or have just gone through for residential. And obviously, there's a bunch of residential that's going through up closer to the metro line. So there's a whole lot of residential. So in addition to the school site, the other applications that have come in for residential, we have negotiated a proffer with them for an additional funding to get another, that should help us get to, get to another elementary school. And that's in addition to the normal proffer that we see from all of our residential things that's based in the residential development criteria and has the formula, and we get the number of school students. So that's something that has been a very, that we're proud of working with your staff to come up with a methodology for how we could sort of parcel out the new residential. And some of, some of the way that happens is, you know, the plan has a mix of uses, and it says a certain amount of residential and a certain amount of non-residential. And when developers came in and said, well, residential isn't, non-residential's not really working for us. We want to go a much heavier residential. We said, well, then you're going to have to go above and beyond what the plan already is for those school sites. We'll have to figure out a way to get another one. So, so that was our, kind of the, what's happening on the ground in the, in the development review cycle. And then I'll turn it over to Mary Ann to jump back. Literally, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Tracy. Everybody. So now we're going to be sort of lengthening the lens and looking out to the next 10 or 20 years. And I wanted to touch on a couple of new policies which are interesting, not just from the residential perspective, but I think they sort of underscore the thinking of the county and where we're going in terms of building flexibility and diversification in our land use mix. And then I'll step you through some of the land use studies that we're working on now that sort of point to these, these new policies. The first two have to do with repurposing non-residential buildings. The first one was called office repurposing. And it was in recognition of the fact that, as you may know, Fairfax County has a pretty high office vacancy rate. It's about 18 million square feet right now. And the idea was, well, is there an opportunity for developers to reuse buildings? Is there a way we can kind of make these properties taxable again? At least in the near term until maybe the office market comes back, or who knows? Maybe it never will because it's changed so much, and that change is permanent. So in, earlier this year in May, the Board of Supervisors adopted a new policy that sets out a performance strategy so that if you were the owner of a vacant or even just an underutilized office building, and you had a different idea, whether that's to be a hotel or a residential use, then if certain performance criteria that are set out in the comprehensive plan are met, one may be able to progress to a rezoning application. Normally, we look to the comprehensive plan to have pretty precise information about what something is planned for in the future. But this is a way to allow more flexibility, as I mentioned, and therefore help with the speed to market, which is viewed as important. On the other hand, we want to make sure that it's still compatible and appropriate for the place it is. So some of the reuses that we are looking at, or we think may come about, include Makerspace, urban agriculture, as well as live-work, hotel or residential uses. And for Makerspace, as part of our zoning ordinance update, there is a new regulation that's being formulated that will allow for sort of more creative use of, literally creative. So you could be, you could have 3D printing, or maybe jewelry, or the ever-popular breweries. Could be appropriate in these buildings as long as these performance criteria are met. But the one that you all are going to be most interested in is what happens if someone proposes to change their office use to a residential use. The comprehensive plan policy says that schools' impacts, as well as other public facilities' impacts, still need to be addressed, and those impacts need to be addressed proportionate to the number of units that are being proposed. Where flexibility would come in is a lot of times, say for an office use, there's more parking that is needed for a residential use. So perhaps there's a way to get a benefit by taking out some of the parking, making it into open space, and that's going to have a stormwater management benefit, even though they may not be going through the same stormwater management improvements that you would see in a new use. That idea got a lot of traction with the board, and they asked us next to look at retail uses. So we did. And that is going to be the example of our latest plan amendment. That was approved by the board just last week on October 30th. And as you can see by this clock, we had some general information about where retail markets are. And this starts with a falling market and goes to a bottoming-out market, not so great at the bottom. Then the market begins to rise, and then finally, in the upper left-hand quadrant, we have the peaking market. So as you can see, the Washington DC area is considered to be a falling market. So that means that we may not see the level of retail development that we have in the past. And I don't think that's a big surprise to anybody because you can go around and see empty spaces. So the Board of Supervisors was similarly concerned that maybe in the interim, we should be about encouraging new uses in these types of buildings. What's different about this policy than the office repurposing one, though, is that it does not support reuse for residential uses. And that was very specific. I mean, some of them are just, have got to do with the shape and configuration of buildings. If they have a very deep floor plate, you're not going to have windows or whatever. So that doesn't work very well for residential use. But some areas of the country had actually repurposed very large spaces like malls. And we thought, well, if there's a developer who is interested in changing a mall or a large center, even a large big-box store to residential use, that really should go through a plan amendment process because the impacts could be so vast. But one thing that I think may be important to you all, as you, as you may recall, a few years ago, there was a new comprehensive plan policy approved that talks about using some of these vacant or underutilized properties for schools. And of course, the shining example is the Bailey's Upper Elementary School. And so this may be another way to look at these office or retail uses with a new eye towards flexibility because the comprehensive plan really does support trying to facilitate reuse in the near term, or permanent if that property is acquired by the school board. The next one I wanted to talk about has got to do with continuing care facilities, and this really doesn't have anything to do with schools, but it's so interesting. I, I bet you all have heard about the Silver Tsunami that's coming, and it just means that our population is growing older quickly. And what this shows is that in the next 20 years or so, there's going to be quite an increase in the number of people who are over 65. The county is now working on a new plan amendment and a new zoning ordinance amendment that would make it easier and more, and provide us with a more logical opportunity or approach for reviewing what we're calling continuing care facilities. And these are the settings where you move in, when you're still really ambulatory and healthy. And then as time changes and your care needs change, you don't have to move. So it's, it's all-in-one. The idea is that you get lodging, meals, transportation, medical services, and any other kinds of services you need. What we're trying to do with the plan amendment is to provide opportunities both in our mixed-use centers, because being near transit or in a development is a great thing, but also, many people want to stay in their neighborhoods. And so this would perhaps provide a path for that to happen as well. There's been a big concern about how we provide affordable accommodations in those, those communities because as you can imagine, some are very high-end, they have a lot of great services, and that can make it sort of difficult. Our first application of this policy plan and zoning ordinance amendment is going to be at the Northern Virginia Training Center site, which you all may be familiar with. It's in the Braddock District. And it was sold by the state a few years ago. It was the, a residential facility for people with developmental and physical disabilities. And it was bought by Erickson, who also has Greenspring, a number of large communities you may be aware of. And the task force was charged with, well, what should happen here? They did look at low-density residential use because the comprehensive plan had called this out for public facilities and institutional use, which was clearly not appropriate anymore. But the option, and the one that Erickson is going forward with, is a continuing care facility. It would have about 1,100 units for independent living, and then another component for assisted living. So moving on to some of our planning studies, the first one I'd like to mention is in the Lachonia Planning, sorry, the Lachonia Community Planning District. Last year, the Board of Supervisors created a new community business center, which is an activity center, and opens the door for more compact and more intense development. Analysis is underway right now, and there is a significant amount of residential use that's being looked at. It's about 1,500 units. And this would mostly be in, what you're looking at is 236 Little River Turnpike, and then bisected by Beauregard Street. And then this is just on the line with Alexandria, so not very far from Landmark Center. There are two pretty large shopping centers. One is on the north, there's Total Wine there, I don't know why I know that. And then there's one on the south side that has a large grocery store. And these are the areas that are being looked at for redevelopment. They're just now beginning to look at the impact analysis. And I especially wanted to say a thank you to Jessica, who came out on a Saturday morning with Brian Schuster from her staff to help us with a community meeting. And it was, it was so appreciated. It wasn't made easier because I think as usual, they were in the middle of a huge deadline. But it was great to have the staff there and talk to people because this idea about how we provide for schools in this area is a very, looms large in many people's minds. We expect the study to be completed within the next eight months, more or less. So please stay tuned. As you might imagine, in addition to schools, another big concern here is transportation. And the idea is through replacing some of the huge amount of planned retail there with a better mix of uses, that we can create a better balance as far as transportation, but understanding that that's going to spur the need for new schools and other public facilities. The next one, our next study is in the McLean Community Planning District. This is an area that's centered around Old Dominion and Chainbridge Road, south of Dolly Madison. The last time we looked at this area in depth was in 1998. So it's a little out of sync with the rest of the county. The idea was really raised by the people who lived in McLean, and they wanted to know why nobody was taking advantage of the recommendations there. And so the idea was to form a task force, Supervisor Faust did that. Supervisor Faust did that. And with the help of a consultant, they have come up with new ideas for what might happen in the CBC. There is a smaller area within this boundary that is being designated for likely redevelopment. It's literally in the center. Right now, in the community business center, there are about 1,300 dwelling units. And this study would be looking at adding close to 1,000 more, but that's over a 10-year period. This is in the beginning stages of the study. There have been a couple of community meetings, and there's another one on Thursday night, if you would like to see where the vision plan is now and to hear what people have to say. But in addition to the residential units, there would be a look at adding some hotel and office use and cutting back a little bit on residential uses. Next is Maryfield, and this one is really exciting. It's not too far from where we are right now. We're looking at two sections of Maryfield. One we call Maryfield. Oh, sorry. I got ahead. Oh, whoops. Oh, I got so excited about Maryfield that I skipped right over Innovation. This one's really important, too. Okay, so backing up. This is right around the Innovation Center Transit Station area. And you may know it is the home of the CIT building. This building is for sale. And so the idea was hatched to take a look at the area and replan it for non-residential uses. There aren't a lot of places in the county that are sort of more or less greenfields that could be appropriate for office use. The comprehensive plan for this area now does have an option that's associated with rail that would allow for considering about 1,200 dwelling units in addition to 1.8 million square feet of office. But under the proposed plan, it would switch entirely to office with some small amount of retail. So we're looking at almost 4.2 million square feet of office use. And the idea is to bring in perhaps a large corporate entity. But there would still be a mix of uses because in Loudoun County, there are, I think, 5,000 units planned just over the border. Right. And to the south, as Tracy just mentioned, that's where we're getting the new elementary school site. So this plan amendment is coming to the Planning Commission and the board very soon. We just published the staff report this week. Now, Maryfield. This area, starting with, it's really two parts. One is the Inova Center, and the other is what we're calling Fairview North. The Inova Center is really interesting. What they did was they bought the former corporate office presence there. And what they proposed is adding on to that so that there could be a Center for Biomedical Research, academic, and a clinical campus to look at a lot to do with cancer therapy. They are proposing to partner with UVA, GMU, and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So it's the bigger part down to the left-hand side. They've talked about 900, 950 residential units, and that's what we're testing. But we think mostly those could end up being housing for researchers, workforce. They've talked about some senior housing. But possibly a large part of it could be student housing. So we're just beginning this study as well. So we're kind of taking the worst-case scenario to look at impacts. And then we'll work with a task force that's been appointed to kind of get a better sense of what Inova would like to do. In the Fairview Office Park, there was about 1.8 million square feet of office approved. This was back in the early 2000s. But only two of the seven buildings were ever built. They've gone from a vacancy rate of 8% in 2005 to a vacancy rate of 22%, and that's just in their two buildings. So they would like to do, to switch. They were mostly office. And now they would like to do a component of about 35% to 45% of residential use, which could turn out to be a lot of units. It could be up to 1,000 units. So the idea was to first go in and look at the whole Maryfield area and get an idea of where are we today with respect to public facilities. So there's work being done on schools, parks, and transportation because how the plan or the entitlement saw this area's development is very different than what we see today. So using that as a baseline, then these additional residential uses would be added on top. And then another analysis done so that we can get a true idea of what this would mean in terms of the new development and how best to respond, either by making sure that new conditions are placed in the plan or the density is changed. But we've, there have only been, I believe, three meetings so far. And one was a community meeting, so this is just getting started. But it is on a pretty robust schedule, and we're hoping to be able to finish it in 2019. So last but not least is, I'd just like to take one more chance to say thank you and highlight the great relationship that we've enjoyed working with your staff. We feel that we've done a lot of work in terms of providing information back and forth. We know that you guys will be there for us, and I hope vice versa, anytime you need us. And with that, thank you very much. We're happy to answer any questions.
I will thank you for that presentation. We do have a list of folks who do have some questions for you. And for my colleagues on the board, we're going to try to implement the same process we used in the last session. So we'll start a clock and give you an indication of when you reach the one-minute remaining point. So if you could please present all of your questions, and hopefully we'll be as efficient as we were in the last session. So the first person I have on the list is Megan, followed by Karen Corbett Sanders, and then Pat.
Thank you. I very much appreciate you taking the time to meet with us. As I shared with our chairman, Karen Corbett Sanders, who cautioned me that you're just here to provide information. But I do want to share with you, and I want to share with my colleagues, that I am very troubled about where we are as a county. There are some developments proposed in Braddock District. And even being able to draw on a unique situation where we actually have a development that's over near the Housing Authority, where they would redevelop the land. So it serves as a great way to kind of look at what the existing housing that's there. They want to triple the amount of housing that's there. And what the projections, based on the county's MOU formula, for proffer formula, on what would be the estimated number of students it would yield from the project, is off by essentially half. So when we're presenting to the Planning Commission and to Department of Planning and Zoning, saying if the developer brings in X number of building units by using the county's required proffer formula, it's essentially projecting half the number of students that we're actually seeing coming. So Jeff Plattenberg's department has a capacity forecast formula that is far more accurate. And yet, as of right now, in the MOU between the Board of Supervisors and the school system, that's not what we provide to all of you. So I kind of wanted to share with you that that's going to be my advocacy. I greatly appreciate our planning commissioners. I am so thankful for the Schools Committee and any work that you all are doing on that. I want to applaud you. I think it is going to help us move in the right direction as a county. But we cannot, given our schools that are overcapacity, continue to have a formula that, yeah, I saw. I prefer, oh, thank you. But we cannot continue to have formulas that you're asking the schools to provide, and then the numbers aren't accurate because we're getting overcrowded schools. And then I want to just say, as a resident who's lived here now since 1995, the rapid growth rate in Fairfax County, when you all are starting to wonder what will happen with the silver explosion or whatever it was that you guys called it, the tsunami, silver tsunami. My husband, who was raised here since age five, we're not going to be part of that silver tsunami if this doesn't stop. Our population growth in this county has gone up 37% just since I moved here. The roadways haven't changed. So our infrastructure, our schools, and even our recreational fields, we're in a very serious problem that Fairfax County wants to keep just packing in as much housing as possible. And people should go study the growth rate in Arlington and Loudoun County and Prince William County to Fairfax County. What we are doing is a problem, and I hope we can all be part of a solution. But this presentation just further affirmed to me, all we're doing is just packing in housing wherever we can, and it's not going to be good for this county, and it's not good for the residents who live here.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. A couple of things. And I really appreciate the joint work between the county and the schools over the past several years. I do think that together, we are making a difference in how we approach this very difficult work. And so thank you for all you do. I do think it would be helpful to have kind of a ballpark number with all these different developments, a range of, are we saying that over the next 10 years, we expect between 5,000 new units and 10,000 new units or some sort of scale? That would be very helpful. The other thing that I think is important is that, as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, the proffer yields, and we talked about this in the Schools Committee in the past, really revisiting the proffer formula to see if we need to adjust that, especially with the multi-dwelling units. What we are seeing is that Fairfax County is no longer a sleepy suburb, but it's really becoming more urbanized, and so that's important. And then the last thing I would urge all of my colleagues is that looking at the silver tsunami, one of the greatest challenges with the silver tsunami is that we don't have enough facilities for our aging population that is affordable. I just saw a recent statistic. Alexandria City got rid of 85% of their affordable housing over a period of 10 years. A lot of that has been pushed into Fairfax County, or the demand for it has been pushed into Fairfax County. And then the other piece is with stagnant wages, we are having a significant number of our seniors retiring. And they're retiring not able to afford the housing that they are either in or even to be able to move into affordable housing. And so we really welcome that, the effort you have in creating opportunities for affordable housing. But we also know that our children thrive when they live in communities that have seniors living along with them in that same community. So I would urge to have that affordable housing for seniors integrated into our broader community.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yes, hi. Thanks a lot. I have a few questions and maybe one next step. Our first question was, so Ms. Strunk, Tracy, right? You mentioned that some of the development, for example, around Reston, is switching from high-rise to townhomes, right? So the expectation was high-rise, but we're ending up with townhomes. And I just wanted to know how that happens and why the county doesn't, there's such a, why the county doesn't seem to have any control over that? In other words, it seems like it's a little bit of a free-for-all. You can do this, or you can do that, and there's a pretty wide range within which you can act. So I just wanted to know how that works. And secondly, and maybe this is the next step for Michael Malloy, if there's anything coming along in Richmond this year on proffers particularly or land use at all, I think it'd be good for, if the county has in their advocacy, their legislative program, anything that we could piggyback on and that the school board could talk about specifically at our meeting on our legislative package next week. I wonder, maybe that might be a next step for Michael Malloy to come to our meeting next week with that. And then finally, I was wondering, with Innovation Station and the change that was made, that is a win, right? Because the developer wanted to change the use of that land to much more heavily residential, and that created the need for school that maybe wasn't there originally. And I'm just curious, what would you say was the key to that? Was it that the supervisor went out of his way and sort of threw his weight around? I mean, why did that happen? Why that win? And how do we reproduce that in the future?
Sure, I'll take that one first, actually, because I think that's exactly it. It was, I mean, not the supervisor throwing his weight around necessarily, but it was having the political support to say yes. And I mean, I think you would have seen staff saying that that was a concern, and you would have seen it from, in the analysis of the report, from, you know, from the Schools Planning Staff as well. But it was really the supervisor being willing to step up and say, yes, this is something that we're going to expect from these particular developments in this area to really get that particular thing to happen in that area. And in terms of control of townhouses or the change or not, I think the jury's frankly still out on, it's not, and I didn't mean to say that it was necessarily a bad thing that was happening. I think it was more that it's just a different thing. So we have a set of standards that need to be addressed in terms of open space and in terms of addressing your impacts for everything from roads to public facilities to, you know, even just design impacts on the surrounding area. So and in a lot of ways, you know, sometimes the townhouses fit in better along the edges. Sometimes they fit, you know, it's a little, it's a smaller footprint. You can fit around roads and on funny-shaped parcels a little bit better. So there are certainly places where it makes sense to put townhouses in. So I think it's not so much a matter of, holy cow, we wanted high-rise, and now all of a sudden we have townhouses, and oh, woe is us. What have we done here? And more of just something to kind of keep in mind as we're looking at things and as something we're seeing. I think there's a lot of flexibility in most of our mixed-use areas and our corridors. There is a lot of deference to, you know, there's no, we can have the best plan in the world, and frankly, if it doesn't make market sense to build it, then we're not going to have it. What we're going to have is the low-rise office that's there today or the vacant car lot or whatever it is. So, you know, if someone can come in with something that's a little different than what we thought, but it can address the standards that we have, then we're usually going to look on that relatively favorably.
If I'm going to just add on, I'll try to be very brief. Ms. Hines, in addition to the interest of the supervisor, it's part of that open communication and dialogue between the supervisor, the school board members, and specifically staff of articulating impacts and the needs associated with that. Mr. Sneed was really significant in that role. And Jessica Mcgillis was as well of articulating historically what's occurred and then in the future. And I think those open lines of communication have really come a long way. Yet we certainly have a long way to go, as was mentioned before. But it is opening those lines of communication. I think that's moving us forward.
Thank you. I have Ms. Strauss, and followed by Ms. Kiesker-Mara.
Thank you. Going back to the Innovation Station, I had the opportunity to be in some of those meetings. And I must say, the collaboration of everybody. And Mr. Plattenberg, you may be able to correct me, but my impression in listening to them is that Supervisor Faust, instead of letting the is that Supervisor Faust, instead of letting the, the, the property owners or the developer, developers, piecemeal that development, he, they looked at the whole piece. And as, as I understand, that was sort of a new thing.
That's correct.
But by looking at the, the total development impact, then he was being, he was able to negotiate something that, that I think was two or three developers would consider to be fair. And from the, um, Mr. Sneed and the school system, not backing down on, we need another school. Thank you very much, we need two schools. So, it was a combination of everybody. But I do think Mr. Faust, in his approach to making them look at the whole package, I was very impressed. And, right, um, Mr. Sneed and, um, Ms. Gillis, everybody else, it was a good piece of work. I have a quick question on the McLean redevelopment. I think this is the third time we've redone McLean. Um, and I don't know if you can answer the question or not. I probably need to go to the meeting to find out. Um, 'cause most of that land is owned by a single person. And we thought we were going to move forward with other plans and he would back out. And in, in this major plan again, is it being pushed because the gentleman who owns the property feels he can't make enough money off of the old plan? In other words, is it being driven by the developer feeling that he's looking for a higher profit? Or is it the community is driving it or the supervisor or everybody? 'Cause I hear different pieces.
It's definitely not the, the develop, the owner of that property. The, um, the area that they're, uh, the community, uh, has identified as being most appropriate for redevelopment is actually more towards this area.
Right.
Um, and then with the transition areas, um, kind of coming. So, I, I think what's different about, uh, this effort is that through the community meetings, there really has been an attempt to, uh, achieve a, a broad consensus about what should happen in McLean. And, um, there are people, of course, who think that everything is fine. Please don't change any. But there seems to be, um, more of a growing voice that recognizes that targeted redevelopment, uh, in the center could be beneficial because in that way, more amenities, um, could be provided.
Looking for better quality of life. Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, okay, Ms. Kiesgaumar, followed by Ms. Palczek.
Well, first, I want to thank you guys for coming over. Um, I know I enjoy being with you guys, uh, a few years ago and it's good to see you. Um, I want, want to follow up on the, um, proffer cases that you mentioned. I know when I was there, we were anxiously awaiting to see the impact of, of that new law. Um, and you mentioned that I think there were two or three developments. So, my question is whether there were things that you typically would have asked for in a proffer that you weren't able to in those cases, uh, because they were outside of those exempted, uh, areas. Um, and then the second part of that is, you know, do you know what the plans are with respect to the proffer law? I know I heard lots of, um, hullabaloo when I was there about, you know, it wasn't really supposed to impact Fairfax and la di da di da. Um, but that didn't come to fruition. So, is there any movement, uh, with respect to kind of walking that back? And, uh, how I, are you seeing, what impact are you really seeing, uh, with that? Um, I'd also like to follow up on, I forget who asked about the formula. I think it was Megan. I wanted to ask you to clarify, you know, where that formula is coming from. Um, and if it needs to be revised or if, you know, are we anywhere near able to do that? Um, because I, I'm a little confused with the way the question was posed. So, I think perhaps we need, um, some clarification. And then the last comment is just with respect to, um, I always felt like we, you know, our legislature had places a great deal of freedom on developers and, and this landowners and that sort of thing. Um, so it's my understanding you don't have the authority, um, other than the comprehensive plan and the guidance. But, um, there's only so much restriction that the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission can do with respect to recommendations.
So, on the, the proffer cases, the biggest, uh, the biggest impact has been it's just a lot harder because nobody really knows what they can say. Um, and there's a lot of really negative impacts if, if we, there could be a lot of negative impacts if we say something wrong and, and then get sued at the end. I would say, in terms of things that we haven't gotten that we would normally get, the affordable housing, um, in these smaller developments, it's, they are below the limit that require affordable housing. And so, the, um, the standard has always been a half percent of the sales price as a contribution to affordable housing. Um, that is something that is clearly a cash proffer and clearly not permitted by the zoning, by the, the legislation. We have actually, in, um, all two that we have gotten through, uh, in both of those cases, we, we were able to show, um, that schools and parks, which are other things that we often get, that we usually get contributions for, that there were capacity deficits in the, in the area. And so, we did get contributions in both of those cases for the schools and for the, the parks. Um, we are asking developers as they give us proffers, we're not asking for proffers as they give us proffers. We're asking them to tell us how they think it meets the, uh, legislation under the theory that it would be a lot harder for them to sue us for something if they have put down in writing that it meets the legislation. Um, but again, we don't, nobody's, nobody's taken any of that stuff to court. So, we don't know what's gonna happen. And in terms of what's happening with it next, um, there, there's a lot going on right now in terms of proposals. The Home Builders Associations have given us some proposals. Um, we don't know what's really gonna happen with any of those. There've, there've been meetings in Richmond that the senators sort of said, go back and learn how to play nice with each other or else we'll do something else to you. Um, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen exactly with it. But the, the biggest thing has just been it, it just slows everything down in terms of, of conversation. And we haven't, in either of the cases that have gone through, had, um, it's not uncommon for developers to offer to, you know, fix somebody's drainage on their site that's, that's next door. Because they're out there, they're working on it anyway. Those kinds of things we sort of think are, are probably, they're a lot harder to get. You know, we're seeing anything that's sort of a design thing on-site, um, with our, our attorneys have gotten a lot more comfortable if the developer says, yes, I can proffer that design feature because it's on-site and I'm allowed to proffer things on-site that are generated by my development. So, those, we're seeing most of that kind of stuff. Um, so, the affordable housing is the big one.
I did want to add one thing.
I'm sorry, the formula.
Yeah, the formula.
But you can please add what you.
And I can, really, the formula really came about and when Mr. Moon is, is here, he usually takes this opportunity to talk about, uh, as being like yourself, a former planning commissioner and a School Board member at the time, that that formulaic approach of the Board of Supervisors and School Board came about. And the formula was driven from it and the yield that's tied to it, which is a county-wide yield average, which seems purposeful, intentional for, uh, impact on the contributor so that we have kind of standard averages and the opportunity for us to, to really take another look at that. And that's why the work at the, uh, Schools Committee for the Planning Commission has been. The initial conversation at the board level was kind of, uh, was entangled in a lot of other things. And I think this, this route, um, because it's been, uh, acknowledged not only by, uh, members of this body, but also during the Planning Commission discussion, that it is something that had developed over time and perhaps it's exceeded its useful use of time, that it needs to be re-looked at. And I think we're, we're talking about that in the, uh, with the Planning Commissioners. And I'll look forward to seeing what they recommend out of that. Um, one of the things I did want to say is that while this is going on, we still have those partnerships. You know, you heard about the silver tsunami. Um, when they talk about a need item as, as identified in the, in the Comprehensive Master Plan for parks, um, we, we, we have opportunities there for park and recreation centers and also schools and also the commingled use and the partnering by having those open communications. We have right now a Park Authority site that's being, um, being presented to us as an opportunity for a school site. Um, and, 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 and that's because those communications are open and the dialogue is open so that we can get shared use and figure out ways that we can go ahead and approach things that in the past hadn't been done before because of the items you mentioned. So, there's not only the legislative language, but there's also the functional practice of that, of that partnership amongst all the governmental agencies to see about ways that we can achieve things that we hadn't done before.
Thank you, Ms. Palczek.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and I, I guess I'm realizing with Evans, we should probably include updates of our committee meetings. I don't know with the chair, if there's a way we could include that, uh, regularly 'cause so much of this does get covered in those committee meetings. And then, um, let's, let's find a way to have committee reports.
When I was on the, uh, when I served as the liaison, I used to send an update to the whole board in the form of an email when we were doing some of this work. Um, that certainly works, but I would also be willing, if you think it's useful, is to have you all do a readout at the, um, board meeting from the dais.
Okay.
But I think both probably helps.
Okay, sounds good. Um, and then beyond that, uh, I guess I'll ask my questions before they get answered. So, the first one, I don't think this was shared tonight, but, um, one of my questions, Mr. Plattenberg, if you could please share, uh, I know we talk about this proffer bill and I realize it makes things maybe a little bit more difficult on the county side. On the school side, I think it, it's understanding really the percentage of, um, funding that comes from the proffers compared to our capital improvement, um, projects amount. Because I, I know we make it sound like it's a big change. Um, I know on the school side, really, it's, you know, it's a drop, um, drop in the bucket of what we've seen. So, I guess why don't you answer that one? I'll keep going.
Thank you for that question. Um, I can say that that's why the work with Supervisor Faust and, and also with Ms. Strauss has been really fruitful and eventful, um, is the recognition and acknowledgement. And Ms. Gillis, if, if you want to talk a little bit to more of the, um, of the impact, you know, when you take a look at the per student per year that we say it costs us to fund a student, um, when you look at the, uh, proffer fund itself, it really is divided like in half of, and, and, and still yet, less than, uh, half of that amount per student. Um, and you look at the proffer language. The proffer language talked about the true impact of that development that was spoken about before. Not what you forecast. The, the nice thing about the way we present our CIP is we have already all those forecasts, notwithstanding any one of those changes that would change the complexity that could leave leeway for a developer to come back and challenge or vice versa. Um, but because our CIP program does what it does, we do an outstanding job of being able to identify what the true student impact is in that new proffer language. That being said, to your point about the proffer formula, um, I still think it's, it's a huge opportunity for us to really, um, I mean, we, we, we are gonna need schools on a lot of these, these, I'm, I'm, I'm excited and bullish about the opportunity of revisioning across this county. Having grown up here, um, having an elementary, middle, and high school here and my undergraduate degree, I'm so excited about the changes and the shift that is going on that is purposeful and strategic, not without its issues that we still have to address that were brought up that are really significant. Um, but when you have those opportunities, you at least have the opportunity to address them. And I hope the same with the proffer. Jessica, did you want to add anything about the, she really wants the technical.
I really just want the percent. Sorry. I have a few questions.
It's less than two percent.
Less than two percent.
Of our capital dollars that are coming from proffers. And the majority of that is for turf fields.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I, I'm gonna let Ms. Palczek, I know you have a, a couple more questions. If we can hold the answers until she can get her questions finished.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, so, I appreciate that 'cause I just wanted to be in context when we're having that conversation. Uh, I will go quickly now. So, a, a couple of things that I hope, you know, we can have, I appreciate this improved collaboration, um, and maybe continue that and grow upon it because so much of what happens affects our school system and vice versa. So, I know there's a new task force to look at affordable housing, um, the Maryfield Task Force, things like that. I would appreciate maybe as a next step, if we, at least on the board, could get more information on some of these committee meetings, um, you know, information that's coming out of that 'cause I know it's in a lot of different places. So, I, you know, I know I would appreciate to get more updates on what's being looked at and, and when those committees are meeting. Um, and as we talk about, you know, affordable housing, especially for people looking to age in place, um, you know, I know in Arlington, they've, they've worked with government land and with church or faith community-owned land, um, to redevelop it, uh, in an affordable partnership. So, I guess I'm wondering, i- is the county looking at, at that? Because when land comes up, I know we want to know what is it being used for? You know, if, if the county has land that they're looking to sell or get rid of. So, it's all one big pocket of county school land. Um, and so, as we start to look at the need for affordable housing, schools and other amenities, if we can keep each other better informed as what's coming up. Um, I do appreciate our partnerships like this, this land that Mr. Plattenberg referred to. But, um, I guess just more, I think the more we communicate and share, I'm gonna stop in a minute. The more we communicate and share information, Mr. Plattenberg, uh, everyone, the, uh, I think the easier it'll be for all of us to continue to collaborate. So, I guess that would be my request as we continue to work toward that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Palczek. Um, I'm now going to allow Ms. Evans. Uh, I think she has a few questions as well. And then I'm gonna take a turn and then we'll do our go-banks.
Thank you. And I really appreciate you, uh, coming by tonight and giving us this presentation and for the, um, partnership that we formed in the last couple of years on the, the Schools Committee. Um, I had, uh, similarly to Ms. Palczek and a couple of others, I, I do think it's critical as we discussing this, whether it's schools or whether it's housing, that we look at both affordable housing and what efforts are being made to counter economic, socioeconomic resegregation. I know we are going to be discussing this again on Wednesday night. But I do think it's a topic that we need to be conscious of and strategic about whenever we, um, discuss this topic. So, I guess my question for you, and I realize it's a big one, was in all of these planning districts, um, are those issues that were considered? Um, is there a strategic effort, uh, not to exacerbate socioeconomic resegregation? So, that's, that's a question. And then, um, the, the other question I have, I agree with, um, Ms. Corbett Sanders, that it would be very useful for us to have, uh, the numbers next to the, the developments. So, a specific question, and, and I, I'm sorry if I missed it in the presentation, but just how many residential units do we think are going to come from the Silver Line development? And as a next step, I would like, um, and perhaps, Mr. Plattenberg, this goes to you or perhaps in, in cooperation, um, with the county, um, to go through all the, the places that are outlined here and, uh, just let us know how many residential units. It's in some places, I, I realize, uh, Lincolnia fifteen, fifteen hundred units. That's a lot of units for that area. That's in Mason District and, uh, we have some very challenged schools. And, uh, in, in that area, uh, challenged as far as capacity is concerned. And so, I think it would be very useful for our planning purposes to, uh, whether get a specific amount, you probably can't give us specifics, but, uh, to, to give us, uh, side by side, particularly, uh, the Silver Line and, um, uh, the Route One Corridor as well as everything listed on, on your slide seven. Um, so I would like to see that. And, uh, with that, I'll, uh, ask you if you have some answers to those two questions I had.
Uh, sure. Um, we, uh, do have information about the, the Silver Line. I guess the, the question to you all, and we might be able to do it both ways, is there's a difference between what's planned. And so, that's sort of the twenty-year build-out versus what's entitled. Um, so, we, um, provide updates on that, at least for Tyson's on a yearly basis. We started to do it for, um, Reston. I don't know that we have any, but anyway, so that's sort of the level we can give you. Um, the other things that I mentioned, Lincolnia, um, Maryfield and McLean, those are planning studies that are underway. So, those are studies where we're just beginning to look at impact analysis. So, um, for those, we have, um, websites available. And of course, we've been working with Ms. Gillis and Mr. Plattenberg. Um, but we can give you updates on when all the meetings are. Um, so, because you might be most interested in when the impact analysis does occur. Um, and the thing about.
On my larger question?
Oh, go ahead. I mean, I, I mean, even, even with the rezonings, I think, um, and Tyson's in the annual report has, has done a really good job. And it's a huge effort, which is part of the reason it's only being done for Tyson's right now, in sort of trying to parse out that. And it's a huge effort, which is part of the reason it's only being done for Tyson's right now, in sort of trying to parse out that when the things will come. Because even though they're entitled, we're seeing, you know, one to three new buildings a year. So we might have, we've entitled tens of thousands of dwelling units in Tyson's already. But how long it's going to take to get those is the trickier part to say out. So well, we can, we can get you the numbers that we have for what they're worth, but that's, again, that's kind of the, even, even to say it's entitled. When is it going to happen? Is it, you know, Tyson's is a, is a twenty-fifty plan, and frankly, probably even beyond that, so.
Well, and then my larger question about whether socioeconomics were taken into account in terms of strategic planning for where and what type of residential units are being planned.
We have started to incorporate the tenants of the One Fairfax into our, our planning. And for, for embark, with which I was very involved, what we did was appreciate that there are market-rate affordable units along the corridor. And we need to figure out how not to redevelop those all the way. Some, one of the members tonight mentioned that Alexandria got rid of eighty-five percent of the affordable. So we focused on the community business centers. And in those community business centers, which are mostly big retail shopping centers, we did replan those for a mix of residential office, hotel. But a much more residential use than we had before. And the idea with that was, within that CB, any particular CBC, they would at least meet the county's affordable housing policies, which are twelve percent of new housing should be affordable. So that's one way to try to at least maintain affordable units in the long term, knowing that even now that we have these market-rate affordable units, they could be redeveloped over time as pressures increase. That being said, there is a specific affordable housing task force that's looking at, well, what do we do about the pressures that are placed on market-rate units? I think there's also an understanding that with market-rate units, there need to be services provided, especially for very low-income families. And an example there is in the, the North Hill area, where the county did a private-public partnership. We have a combination of market-rate townhouses, units, a hundred units, I believe it is, that will be affordable to seniors, and then several hun, three hundred, I'm guessing, I think that's about right, units, rental units that would be affordable for all others. But with that, the, the partner will be providing education services and information about how to budget and maintain a household and all that, which I think is absolutely essential in terms of trying to sort of provide for a better socio-economic balance with, within our communities. I mean, there are always going to be people who are in need, but the idea is to help lift them into higher-paying jobs as time goes on, so that we have these units that can be replenished over time as new people are coming in. I don't know if that answered your question specifically. I could try to do better if not.
Well, it answered part of it. And thank you for, for that. I, I'm thinking in terms of how our affordable housing tends to go into certain areas of the county and not in others. And I do think that's something we need to address.
All right, thank you. After I ask a couple of questions, I'm gonna go to go-backs. So far, I have just Megan on the list. If there's anyone else that would like to get on the go-backs, let's signal over here. And either Sandy or I will get your name down. So I'd like to focus on Slides Nine and Ten. And I, and, and I guess part of why I want to focus on this is because these are the forward-looking slides. And I guess what I would like to first understand is, what does that mean when you say that this is a falling market? And does that portend that we are going to be moving into a even worse situation with respect to retail? Because we have to go through the bottoming market phase. And then a similar question, I would say, relates to the office market. You mentioned eighteen million square feet of office vacancy. Is that a number that is less or more than prior year's vacancy rates? And where is the office market on the clock? That, that's an important question, I think, that, to understand. And then, then finally, the slide that talks about the Fairfax County Silver tsunami. The implication of a tsunami is that it's sort of new water coming in, right? But in this case, I think what you're talking about is existing population is aging. So what I'd like to, if you, if you have the information, is explain sort of what are the other pieces of the pie of Fairfax County population? What's happening in those other, other segments of the population, so that we can understand? Is it a tsunami, I guess, because it is disproportionately larger than it has been with respect to other segments of our population?
Sure. I can try to take that last one first. The, the, that segment of the population is growing relative to other population segments. I, I believe five years ago, it was thirteen percent. And, or today, it's thirteen percent, and we expect by twenty thirty-five for that to be seventeen percent. So other sort of age cohorts are going down a little bit, and a lot, but that is a pretty big jump in term. But what was interesting is that this segment of the population grew. But the people who were between, I think it was sixty and sixty-five, or fifty-five to sixty-five, actually is going to fall a little bit. And I think that just may be because of the, the population curve, that that group is coming up. It's kind of like the, the kids that you, you work with. I got this information from the county's website. They just published a new demographic report that's based on the American Census information, which is really fascinating. It's just, so anyway, that's where I got that. And then, let's see, you asked about this, the retail market. In Fairfax County, we really aren't experiencing that much retail vacancy compared to office vacancy. I was just trying to get the exact number. And the, I, part of the idea behind this policy was, well, do we really need to worry about retail changes over time? And so this was included in the staff report, just to kind of say, we may see more retail vacancy. Not that, I think what this connotes is the bottoming of the market is viewed as a bad thing, because there's going to be more retail vacancy. But, you know, if you kind of buy the idea that we've been over-retailed for years, it may just be kind of trending toward a nor, a more normal amount of retail. And plus, you have to take into account the fact that people are shopping online. So the idea for retail and office was, oh no, I mean, not necessarily, the sky is falling so much as things are changing. And are there opportunities for reusing this space ahead of demolition or ahead of, you know, whatever the next surge is? I, I heard something really interesting a while ago, which was, in the office market, what is becoming, a lot of what is vacant is not the Class A space so much. It's the other space that hasn't been updated with the proper fiber and cables and, and all that stuff, that they need to be competitive. And so they're just kind of hanging on to the space, because right now it doesn't make sense maybe to invest in that, but it might over time. So the, the whole idea behind these two policies changes was just to give the development community and the board and citizens more tools for what could happen in those areas.
And I'll jump in and out on the office market. We are seeing, we actually are seeing new office being built. We are seeing, we're even seeing new spec office being built, which has been a while, frankly, since we've seen that. So we're, we're seeing, but where we're seeing it is if you're on the metro station. So, so that's, that's a big part of what we're seeing, is people leaving, leaving office buildings that are a little further away from the metro and moving into office buildings that are closer. So in terms of sort of what it does, and they're also taking smaller spaces. We're tending to see people move into spaces with putting more people in, in a less square foot per person. So it's freeing up some of those farther-out office buildings for either cheaper office space for people, or maybe reuse of the building. But we're, and, and we're seeing perhaps the office market square footage contract a little bit, but not necessarily the, the office thing. So that's, I mean, there are places in the country where nobody's building, nobody would build a spec office building. We're certainly getting new office buildings, so that, but it's, it's sort of where they are.
Okay, Ms. McGolfin?
Thank you. I, I just wanted a little more clarity from tonight's discussion. And, and we talked a little bit again about the proffer formula that's used to project how many students might come from a development versus Fairfax County Department of Facilities, which Ms. Gillis and Mr. Plattenberg, the office does. And when we have this, you know, wide disconnect between what the proffer formula is saying, what would we project the number of children that might get produced out of this housing proposal? Versus what FCPS says, okay, based on what we know from this particular area within one of the largest counties in the country, we're, we're anticipating we're going to see this kind of projected enrollment. And some can say, oh, well, this is about preventing developers from having expensive proffer requirements if, on, on a project they're bringing forward. I, I'm gonna go to the next level, which is sometimes it may not be any amount of proffer funding is going to help us, because as this board knows, we don't want to keep building trailers and modulators on existing schools, because that's actually not going to solve the problem of cafeteria space, library, gym, et cetera. So at some point, someone may want to put in a development, and this county is going to look at it and say, that is really going to be harmful to the quality of life for the people who already live there. And it's not a, like, in other words, taking a plot of land where we might have had X number of houses and saying, now we're going to triple it. I'm trying to get a sense of how much does Fairfax County's comprehensive plan protect us as a resident, you know, community of a million people now from being at the mercy of whatever developer finds a plot of land and wants to put whatever they want on it? Do we have those protections? Because someone mentioned earlier, is it the supervisor bringing the voice and saying, you want to develop the land, you can develop it, but it's got to be within this framework of what it might produce. And no, it's not going to be fifteen hundred new multifamily units, because our roadways can't handle it, our schools can't handle it. And so no, for Fairfax County and our comprehensive plan, that's not going to work. Do we have even that ability to? Because I, I'm trying to not raise this panic for any of my colleagues who still have enough energy and for you guys to be listening. But this, this has been an epiphany for me, probably in the last week to ten days after talking to my planning commissioner. I, I'm really sort of shocked, as someone who's lived here almost thirty years, it feels like we have no control. So can you share with me, if, from the DPZ standpoint, what, if any, control do we have to protect the quality of life in Fairfax County?
I'll, I'll take actually the easier part of that first, which is the, the formula. The formula is adjusted annually by the schools to, to look at it. It is county-wide, and that might be the difference in what you're seeing with a particular area. And I'm not going to go into, there's, there's some good reasons to do it that way. There's probably some bad reasons to do, you know, to have done it that way. But that, that is the decision that the school board and the Board of Supervisors made for some very particular reasons. And so, so that might be the difference. It is adjusted every year, both the amount that is in there and the, the number of, of school, the number of kids coming from the different unit types. So, so it does, it, it's not, not totally static, but it is, it is a county-wide formula. So in terms of, can we adjust the formula if we're seeing it? If, I mean, it is adjusted every year, based on, we look, and you guys know better than I do, but they look at the number of students that are actually coming out, and it is looked at, at county-wide. So that's, that's the formula. In terms of, you know, how much, how much development is too much development, which is, I kind of feel like what you're asking. You know, there are pieces of it, Virginia is a Dillon Rule state, we do not have a adequate public facilities ordinance. We are not allowed to say, this road is always too crowded, is already too crowded, so we can't do that. That said, we have a, a very strong, you know, we have a strong comprehensive plan that looks at areas and does try and limit impacts. And, you know, but everything, everything has trade-offs. We've been talking about affordable housing here. Well, the way you get better, the way you get affordable housing is you have adequate housing supply. If we can't add units, because we don't want to serve any of the units, then we're not going to have affordable housing. I mean, that's, that's what's happening in Seattle and some of those other places. So it's, it's not quite as easy as, well, if we just shut the door, everything's going to be great. I think we do have, we do have strong controls in the, in the comprehensive plan that, that are trying to get at the impacts. It does get, it does get tricky. I mean, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to you about that. And in Virginia, and under the rules that we operate under, you know, if, if we really got pushed to the, pushed to the wall in, in the courts about turning something down, because the road was already, the road is already too crowded, and everything's already too crowded. Yeah, that, that could be something that we could, that, that we might potentially lose on in the future, so. But, but that said, we do have standards that talk about impacts and mitigating impacts, and we, we've been pretty good at using those. I'm, I'm sure that's probably not an entirely satisfactory answer, but it's sort of the, what it really looks like.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess it's very concerning, like I said, to me, that a county that's now pushing at one point one million. And for anyone to say that we are nationally known for having some of the worst traffic in the country. So this notion that we're gonna, you know, just build until there is not one postage stamp space left to build on it, because we're worried about the cost of living and what it's going to do. I, I guess I feel like it is a complex issue, but our poverty rates have skyrocketed from three percent in nineteen seventy to now at about thirty percent in our schools. So, you know, at some point, we have to be just, it, it, the question isn't necessarily, do we not have enough affordable housing? It's just, the bottom line is, as a size of the county in the whole, do we have over a million people in this square, square miles? Is this appropriate? Because the chokehold of what will happen in, in Fairfax County affects all the surrounding counties. And everyone who lives south of Virginia and north of Virginia, I mean, what we do here affects everyone trying to go up the interstate, so.
Ms. McGolfin, thank you. I want to make sure we have, get everybody home tonight. So I want to thank our presenters tonight for coming and, and being here tonight to give such a terrific presentation. We, we do have one more little task to do, and that's our next steps, which. Yeah, we'll, we'll route these through, Mr. Plattenberg, to the extent there's involvement there, so. The first next step is one of Karen Corbett Sanders, provide a range of, range of number of new units expected.
Across the county. But I had a second one, which was recommendations to changes in the proffer. Oh, okay, that's, actually, Ms. Heinz has it. Oh, okay, that's, actually, Ms. Heinz has it as well, so that's fine.
Did you have a range?
A range of the number of new units expected. So, it gets at those that have been approved versus actually built or being built, where there's shovels turned. So, we have approved Embark Development, we've approved Silverline, we've got the McLean, we've got all these different ones. So if you add it in aggregate, the worst case of numbers is X amount of thousands and the...
So I think, Jeff, you've got what she's looking for there.
I have another framework, yes.
Okay, so, can we see a show of hands, those support that? Okay, that's a majority. The second bullet, it sounds like maybe Ms. Corbett-Sanders and Ms. Heinz both would like to be named there, but...
Michael.
Michael will be prepared to entertain questions regarding this.
Okay. Uh-oh. Okay, we'll show of hands for this one. That's a majority. The third bullet, provide regular updates to the school board from land use committee meetings.
This is planning commission school.
Yeah, this is ours, and I think...
Yeah, so, I guess I would like updates that would be, no, so this is not our committee meeting. So this is...
Schools meeting.
No.
Let her finish.
So this is the county's Affordable Housing Task Force. I know Ms. Corbett-Sanders sits on it. I know I have the Maryfield, whether they use it, the planning, they either call it a task force or a committee, where they're looking at kind of the impact, the way it was done by Mr. Faust. So...
It's the Affordable Housing.
Timelines, right? So my Maryfield one is 2019 timelines and updates.
So, I think you need affordable housing after the word county, right?
No, it's in the, it's in the parenthesis.
Oh, I see, I see.
That's not clear, though. We want it coming specifically from that.
Well, affordable housing, as well as the, they have the list of the specific development areas they're looking at. I know there's a Maryfield one. I don't know of, you know, the others.
So, Ms. Palchek, I have asked Lisa to send out to everybody the materials from the Affordable Housing Task Force, which was launched last Thursday. And as more information comes out of that, I will be happy to share. I am sitting on that task force.
So I would like the Maryfield one. I don't know if other board members have ones in their districts. They would also like to see timelines and information, because I know our staff sits on some of, not all of those.
And also, just the mechanics of getting updates from county, from the county, so...
Planning committee.
Right, so it's a separate one, that's something we need to do. So that's something, you know, Ms. Evans and I can work with the chair to ensure that the, just the schools committee, which has a very narrow scope, is providing updates, staff sits on that as well, to the full board, as well as these are more county task forces.
So is there an action item for Mr. Plattenberg on this one, that he needs to follow up on?
Yeah, so this is, well, you know, I don't know if it's, Ms. Corbett-Sanders is giving the Affordable Housing one or our staff. I would like to know the Maryfield one, and any other specific ones that Mr. Plattenberg and his staff, I believe, have a role in.
The ones that we have a role in, we provide the notification. The notification, however, reference the DPZ number on it, which unless you read the full document, you won't get to what you're looking for. And I think the affordable housing piece that Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders mentioned might be a good way, a liaison way to introduce. And then, as they stated, they do post these on their website. So the ones that you happen to see from that governing body committee, standing committee, through that liaison purpose might work in addition to what we already provide you.
I...
And if I find anything, I'll send it directly to you.
At least meeting times, I know you have those.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So can we see a show of hands who supports this?
Yeah, basically. All right, and the meeting times is what I heard, for more communication to the...
Okay, so those are the county committees? Because the other one is not a next step, it's for us to do, I think.
Okay, and then, I believe, Ms. McLaughlin, you may have a bullet that we need to add to the list here.
Yeah, but we need to...
Okay, all right. The next bullet is, provide the number of residential units expected in each district.
Right, and you understand that what I'm talking about there, the Silverline, Maryfield, Lincolnia, everything that was, yeah, Route 1 corridor, yeah.
So that presented is presented in this...
In the, yeah, or each area discussed tonight.
Okay.
So, Ms. Evans, just to clarify, so some of these are still being worked out? Like, the Maryfield ones started at fifteen hundred, they're now at nine hundred. So do we want just the ones where we have a finalized plan, or the ones that are a work in progress?
No, it's along the line of the first bullet point, where I'd like to get a sense, how many units do, how many residential units do we expect along the Silverline, for example? You know, we're talking about that being...
Right, how many are they, like she said, is the...
How many do you, yeah, or what's the projection for it? Or a range, if a range works? You know, some of these, we just don't know the final, of course, but if we had a range or a ballpark figure, you know, it does look like bullet one, except I believe yours was the total, right?
If we could, I think if we consolidate in bullet one and have it a joint request...
That's fine.
And provide the specific for each one as a total.
Right, okay, so you, Madam Clerk, if you want to combine those two, you know, and expect across the county, if you wanted to put at the end, "and specifics for each individual area discussed as part of this presentation," that'd be fine. And then, if you wanted to put my name on it, then I'll remember that that was a request of mine, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we just get a show of hands on bullet one again, just to make sure everybody's okay with that? Okay, and then, finally, Ms. McLaughlin, you wanted to add a bullet?
Right, so, I had asked the question about the proffer formula that's in the current MOU between the county and schools versus the capacity projection formula that our staff currently uses. And I will say, I was very surprised when Tracy said that the school board and the board of supervisors vote on that formula every year, because I've been on seven years and I've never voted on a formula. So, that might be just her lack of understanding of it. But either way, I mean, Mr. Plattenberg, you and Jessica were very helpful in our prior meeting on this, so I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I want a bullet up there that says, you know, do we need to direct staff to, how, I guess my question is, what can we do to direct you and the superintendent to work with county staff to say that, whether it's getting a proffer formula that's more accurate, or if it's that you want to include, and you guys, this was the other option, is that my planning commissioner said, if we would just provide the capacity enrollment projections as we know them to be most accurate versus whatever proffer formula has been dictated by the board of supervisors, at minimum, they would then get almost two side-by-side projections. One is, here's your proffer formula, now we're telling you, based on our internal FCPS formula, this project could actually produce X number of students. Because the side-by-side for the planning commissioners alone and for the public is going to be that it could be twice the number of kids that are going to be yielded out of that. We've got to get the information out to the people who make decisions, and right now, we don't.
So, Ms. McLaughlin, you want to take a look and see if that captures what you're trying to get at?
I will say, it is on the planning committee agenda.
It's on the, on the schools committee agenda.
But I will tell you, so legislatively, that is a legislative approach. But I think as a follow-up, perhaps, we can ask Dr. Burry Brand to have a conversation with Mr. Hill.
Mr. Plattenberg, thank you, but as I understood from our conversation, this is a county MOU between us and the schools, and what we provide to them when there's going to be a developer proposal, and that we use the proffer formula. And one of the things we talked about was, at minimum, there's nothing that ties our hands as a school division of saying, sure, based on the proffer formula you've directed us to use, it will yield this many students. However, we're also going to give you a second projection number, and that's based on our internal formula, that we have actually found to be more accurate. So at minimum, on a going-forward basis, we can, we have some control.
I think it's a little more complex than that. What it is, is that it has to take, when they look at the proffer, they look at what is the current capacity of the school, and then determine whether or not it impacts that current capacity or exceeds it. But part of the way that they do the current capacity is that they look at all modulators that are already associated with the school. They don't count the trailers, but they count the modulators. And therefore, and so, it under...
We're not talking about the same thing, but we're not talking about the same thing, Ms. Evans. That's, I mean, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, I'm trying to get us out of here, and you're hearing me saying, you're hearing something else from what I am saying. What I am saying is, when our staff give a projection of the number of students they think will be produced by this number of housing units, the proffer formula, which is to get money out of the developer, is one formula. Theirs is based on a different formula, just capacity enrollment. And I'm saying, I know we can't ask a developer to give any more proffer money in that formula, but a secondary piece of information for the planning commission to know what is going to happen to this school if we allow this project to go through, is we could end up with twice the number of students, and then it's not a number of, amount of proffers. We may not physically have space...
I'm going to call the question, because I just want us to move forward, and I don't...
I do, so I don't, I mean, I guess, Mr. Plattenberg, now I'm starting to get, I felt it was crystal clear when the three of us talked.
I think it's not crystal clear, but... Sorry, so I've been sitting on the schools committee, we've been hearing from the commissioners. This is, I'm with you that this needs to happen, a hundred percent, Ms. McLaughlin. I don't think it's as straightforward as a simple formula, so...
No, but Ms. Palchek...
So just to say, just to say, the schools committee is working on this. Can we have, can we direct the superintendent to support that work?
Mr. Plattenberg told me that this is what they produce, and I'm just, why wouldn't we, at least as a school board, say, we want you to produce projections that you know to be accurate for at least this board and the public to know how many people are projected to come out of this?
All right, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Plattenberg, do you understand the next step that she is requesting of you?
No, not totally. I have an understanding and concept of what we talked about. I do know that the proffer formula was agreed upon between the elected officials of the school board and the board of supervisors. Now, what happened, we're talking back historically, prior to this governing body, that's why if Mr. Moon was here, it would shed some light on it. And when it was brought up as part of the Joint Infrastructure Finance Committee, as to a relook on, I think it was the extension of artificial turf maintenance and some other things, there was, there were so many things going on that the focus didn't get re-engineered on that. Now, I will say, we can ask the superintendent and the county executive to look at this because of what is being stated that we did articulate. You heard, it's two percent of the capital cost. That is a fact. We provide updates on the yields that they incorporate into it. Those are changes that are done annually or every three years, every two years, but that is not the formulaic approach to the proffer. Given that, and the legislative change that happened, as opposed to those that you can get and can't get, it creates an opportunity for a lot of confusion. I will say, the statement about the true impact to us versus the student yield that was agreed upon, and the proffer, and what was being described about the fifty percent of the value, I think if I bring this conversation up with the superintendent, it affords him the opportunity to begin the conversation with Mr. Hill. And if I'm missing something, it's only because it's 10 o'clock.
Okay, I think that, actually, what you, I mean, that's, appreciate the history, but I think, actually, this is capturing what your point is, and I think reflects his description of the history, which is, what can we do as a board to direct the superintendent to work with the county to get a proffer formula that's more accurate? I think that is, distills what this conversation is. So, Ms. McLaughlin, unless you would like to do a little editing of the bullet?
It's just missing the word, after capacity projection formula. As I understand...
All right, okay, so putting a formula in there, with that change, can we get a vote on it, to support it?
And I could just add that if you go to the Fairfax County website, the Fairfax County Public Schools website, and type in "proffers" on the search, it will take you to our development review and proffer processes. And Attachment B has a copy of the actual implementation motion from 2002 that developed the formulas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, so if we could see a show of support for the bullet. All right, that has the majority of the board. Thank you very much, everyone. The work session is now concluded.